Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. If we could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, then we'll ask Councilmember Erdley to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Shall we call the roll, please?
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher-Cromway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Shawalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Saines?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Well, we have four hours. We usually do.
That's good.
Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting in your packet if you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Make a motion?
Thank you. Motion for approval?
A second.
And a second. And if there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also in your packets should have been a copy of the latest check register that we've run. Everyone would indicate if you've received that report. Thank you. Okay, public comments. And first on the list for public comments, Ms. Laurie Saunders. It looks like it's time to talk about the Festival of the Horse.
Can you believe it? It's not that far away. So, once again, the Festival of the Horse will be the second weekend in September. If you recall, we changed that last year rather than in October. So, the cook-off will be September the 7th with the festival actually starting on Friday, September the 8th, and then going through the 10th on Sunday. On the second page is kind of a listing of the logistics as to how the streets will close and things like that. I've worked with the police department, Public Works, Fire, EMA, EMS, where we all sat in a room together and discussed the best way to make sure that we did it the safest way for the street closers. You will notice that, once again, we are not closing Broadway again this year, so we will go from Broadway in Maine to Mulberry once again this year. And then we'll have our parades on Friday night, the children's parade on Friday. Saturday night will be the grand parade of horses, and then Sunday we'll do the pet parade and the blessing of the animals, too. I don't think much has changed. The only thing that we did last year that I'd reached out to you, Mayor, to get permission for was just to change when we came in with the carnival to get it all here on time, so we blocked off a section of the parking lot behind us so that he could go ahead and roll in Wednesday evening. But we left enough spaces so that people could still park there, but it made it easier for him to go ahead and bring it in a little bit earlier, so I did add that to the Wednesday schedule. We are in the process of getting our letters prepared for the residents. I don't know if you all are aware or not, but for the last couple of years, we've always sent letters to the residents and the businesses in the downtown, in the festival area, and on Main Street and around the college, too, just so they're apprised of what's going on. The police is great about also putting packets on everybody's car, so they are well aware of when the festival's coming and to use caution when they're coming through, and they have a list of the activities so that they know when the parade routes, when the parades are beginning and ending, so that they can kind of schedule their day around those things if they think they're going to be out and about through town, so.
We appreciate that courtesy, Laurie, to our residents. I think that's important. Yeah, you mentioned, Laurie, meeting with police and fire with an interest in public safety, but I'm curious about, you're still having a chili cook-off on Thursday night, and where's the public safety in serving some of that hot chili?
Giving out Roll 8.
Well, I think...
Yeah, where's the tums? Where's the tums?
Giving out Roll 8.
They may have a cooling station for you.
Indeed.
Ice water and ice.
Yes.
Any questions for Laurie about the festival schedule or what the city's involvement is?
Motion.
Good job.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve these dates and times for the street closings for the Festival of the Horse. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We'll see you at the festival.
Yes, ma'am, you will.
Yes, you will.
Thank you, Laurie. Also, on our agenda, on the sign-in sheet for public comment, is Lieutenant Megan Monae?
Right.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Well, I'm here again this year representing the Salvation Army to ask for approval of our Red Shield 5K race. It's a 17th annual race that'll be held this year, and we're seeking approval for September 9th, the weekend, the same weekend as the Festival of the Horse, as it has traditionally been in the past. This year, we're applying for the small route based on our numbers from past years, which would go through Scott County Park, and we've already been in contact with Darren and Tracy. They're aware of our application, as well as EMS will be on standby for that as well. But September 9th, 9:00 a.m., the small route through the city, so that's what we're here requesting approval for.
Sounds like you're very well-prepared tonight.
Trying to be, yeah.
So, you've got all your documentation. Your motion for approval?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made, second.
I didn't want to jump in. I'm too quick sometimes.
You're shy, Connie, that's why.
Yeah, that's it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Salvation Army Red Shield 5K. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Those are the only two public comments that we had. Yes, ma'am.
I need to bring something up for PCA. We approved them to do their 5K August 16th or something. They need to cancel that, and they're going to try to do it up in April.
Okay, so they'll come back to us.
So, they're going to cancel this one, and we'll come back in April and approve our first of the year and approve another, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll notify the police and Public Works on that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Is there anyone else that is in the audience that wanted to speak under public comment? Okay, thank you. Then I'm going to have to torture you with mayor's comments.
But we hope they...
It's that portion of the agenda. I'll be brief this evening. Couple of things that I wanted to make you aware of. Each of you have received information, probably at your home, about the Kentucky League of Cities Conference, which I believe is in October. The conference starts on a Tuesday evening with an opening reception, and then the workshops begin that Wednesday morning. It's in northern Kentucky this year. A couple of you have spoken with me already, wanted to extend an invitation to every council member to attend if you would like. Arlene will be glad to register you for the conference. There are two conference hotels, both right there across the street from the convention center, so let us know if we can help you register, and would be glad for any of you to attend that conference. Also, just a heads-up, we always are aware of the issues surrounding the state pension system, KERS, which has historically been, at least for the last 15 years or so, has been very underfunded and left that pension plan in a weakened state, as opposed to the CERS, the County Employee Retirement System that we are a part of. That is much better funded because cities and counties have always paid their required amount into the system. There's been a lot of discussion about potentially splitting out CERS, the County Employee Retirement System, from the Kentucky Employee Retirement System. That has not happened yet. It could happen during a special session later this year on pension, but if the two systems are not split, the KERS board has restated some assumptions that if they stay in place, will cause our pension costs to rise significantly. And this is a future decision that will be made by the Kentucky Employees Retirement System, and I'm sure it'll get a lot of discussion during the special session on taxation and pension, but just wanted you to be aware that we're watching this on the horizon, and we, if there's not legislative relief, we could have an increase in our CERS payments in the future. Also, on behalf of a number of citizens and several council members, just want to bring up the issue to the council concerning fireworks during holidays, and we no longer have firecrackers and sparklers. We have mortar rounds that go off, and they do it all times of day and night. I am not proposing a change to our fireworks ordinance, however, if any of you all, if you've heard from people, or if any of you all have a concern about that ordinance and would like to pursue changing our fireworks ordinance, if you get in touch with us, we'll be glad to discuss that. It's not an initiative that we're going to push from the mayor's office, but this time of year, we do hear concerns from citizens, and just wanted you all to know that that's an option for you to pursue, should you choose.
I think the ordinance, the good ordinance, is just that the people are not following the ordinance. That's the problem. The ordinance is great. You've got two times, two times a year you can do it, but it's for these people who want to shoot them off all the time, and it's hard to catch those people because, you know, they're blocks away when they go off, you know?
But we did, we've, it is an issue that we hear a lot about. I just want to make sure the council knows that we can discuss that if it's necessary at a later date. And that is the extent of my mayor's comments for tonight. I know, very, very limited. With council's permission, I'd like to just slightly change the order of our agenda. If we could undertake item number nine on the agenda early on, we have with us tonight Mr. David Thompson, who is Chair of the City's Board of Ethics. David and his committee have worked long and hard. They recently helped us rewrite the ethics ordinance, and we took that committee's recommendations and incorporated those changes into our ethics ordinance. David, for some time, on behalf of the Ethics Commission, has urged us to consider being designated as a Certified City of Ethics through the Kentucky League of Cities, and there are specific requirements for that. David, would you like to address the council about this request?
I appreciate you all taking up the subject. It's the rewrite of the...
Come up, Dave.
The rewrite of the ordinance that we approved, you all approved earlier this year, was the first requirement in getting to be a certified city. Georgetown is not the first city in the state to get this designation. In fact, we're not the first city in Scott County, Sadieville. I think Sadieville was the first overall in the whole state, but certainly is one of the first that is seeking status as a certified city of ethics, and so I appreciate you all taking up the resolution to put that in effect, and the League of Cities, once this gets into effect, is willing to do training for all city employees at your all's designation, whenever you want to do that. So, again, a lot of time went into getting the new ordinance in place. The other one, I believe, was 20, 27 years old, and we used a lot of that language. I would say half of the ordinance that we have in effect now came from that period, so there were some changes that we felt needed to be made, and we're pleased with it and pleased that you all took action on it, so thank you.
Thank you, David. Would you like to read the resolution, please?
Sure. A resolution of the legislative body of the City of Georgetown approving a certified city of ethics proposal, subscribing to certain ethics principles, and pledging to conduct its affairs accordingly. Whereas the legislative body of the City of Georgetown does desire to become a certified city of ethics in accordance with the Kentucky League of Cities Certified City of Ethics Program, and where it is necessary to enter into an agreement with KLC to carry out the program requirements, including ordinance review, adoption of resolution, and training; and whereas the attached agreement outlines the program requirements and requires city approval of all elements; and whereas the Kentucky League of Cities has established a certified city of ethics program; and whereas the City of Georgetown wishes to be certified as a certified city of ethics under the Kentucky League of Cities program; and whereas part of the certification process requires the mayor and council to subscribe to the ethics principles set out in KRS 65003 and ordinance number 1994031 as amended by ordinance 2012001 and 2016013, now therefore be resolved by the legislative body of the City of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, that the agreement attached to this resolution between the City of Georgetown and the Kentucky League of Cities be and the same is approved. The mayor is authorized and directed to execute the agreement for and on behalf of the city, and the city clerk is authorized and directed to attest such signature. That, as a group and as individuals, the governing authority subscribes to the following ethics principles and pledges to conduct its affairs accordingly. Serve the public interest, not our own. Provide courteous, equitable, and prompt services to all citizens. Be in tune with and care about the needs and issues of all citizens, public officials, and employees. Be interested, engaged, and responsive in interactions with citizens. Recognize and support the public's right to know the city's business. Fulfill the duties and responsibilities of holding public office. Observe the highest standards of integrity in official acts and undertake responsibilities for the benefit of the greater public good. Faithfully discharge the duties of office regardless of personal considerations, recognizing that the public interest is the primary concern. Uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and carry out impartially the laws of the nation, state, and city, and thus foster respect for all government. Comply with both the letter and the spirit of the law and policies affecting operations of the city. Recognize the obligations to implement the adopted goals and objectives of the city in good faith regardless of personal views. Present both official and personal conduct in a manner that is above reproach. Do not use the position to secure special privileges or exemptions that are different from those available to the general public. Understand and abide by the respective roles and responsibilities of elected and appointed officials and city staff, and do not undermine them in their work. Be independent, impartial, and fair in judgment and actions. Be ethical and professional. Be trustworthy, acting with the utmost integrity and moral courage. Be truthful and reliable. Be accountable for actions and behavior, and accept responsibility for decisions. Make impartial decisions free of influence from unlawful gifts, narrow political interests, and financial and other personal interests that impart independent judgment or action. Be fair, distributing benefits and burdens according to consistent and equitable criteria. Oppose all forms of harassment and unlawful discrimination. Extend equal opportunities and due process to all parties in matters under consideration. Be respectful of confidences and confidential information. Avoid giving the appearance of impropriety and of using the position for personal gain. Apply knowledge and expertise to assigned activities and to the interpersonal relationships that are part of the position in a consistent, confident, competent, and productive manner. Approach the position and work-related relationships with a positive attitude, contributing to supportive, respectful, and non-threatening work environment. Keep professional knowledge and skills current and growing. Be respectful of all city staff, officials, volunteers, and others who participate in the city government. Be fiscally responsible with the city resources. Make decisions after prudent consideration of their financial impact, taking into account the long-term financial needs of the city, especially its financial stability. Demonstrate concern for the proper use of city assets. Follow established procedures and do not use public resources for personal gain. Make decisions that seek to preserve the financial capacity of the city to provide programs and services for city residents. Provide full disclosure of any potential financial or other private conflict of interest, and abstain from participating in the discussion and vote on these matters. Prevent misuse of public funds by establishing, maintaining, and following strong fiscal and management controls. Report any misuse of public funds. Communicate effectively and respectfully. Respectfully. Convey the city's care for and commitment to its citizens. Communicate in a manner that is approachable, open-minded, and willing to participate in dialogue. Engage in effective two-way communication by listening carefully, asking questions and responding appropriately, which adds value to conversations. Do not interfere with the orderly conduct of meetings by interrupting others or making personal comments not germane to the business at hand. Follow up on inquiries in a timely manner. Encourage and facilitate citizen involvement in policy decision-making. Be respectful in disagreements and contribute constructively to discussions on the issue. Create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity. Promote intelligent, proactive, and thoughtful innovation in order to advance the city's policy agenda and provide city services while considering the broader regional, statewide, national, and international implications of the city's decisions and issues. Maintain consistent standards, but also be sensitive to the need for compromise creative problems. Solving and make improvements when appropriate. Be open to new ideas and processes, adopting them as they conserve resources and provide efficient and effective service. Consider the potential long-term consequences and implications of all actions and actions. This resolution is approved by the vote of the City Council, City of Georgetown, on the 24th day of July 2017.
Motion made.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
A second.
And seconded. A lot of language in there, but I believe it's all steps that this council takes each time they get together.
We hope so.
Also, we'd like for you to know that there's a $500 application fee that goes along with this application, and we've suggested to the Ethics Commission that the city would be glad to pay that application fee, so.
That fee pays for the training, so.
Oh, that fee pays for the training. Okay, okay. So, if you're comfortable with that being part of your motion, Connie and Ollie. Okay, if there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? David, thank you all very much. Please give the commission our best. Item eight on, excuse me, item seven on your agenda is a discussion of the drainage issue in Harmony Ridge. Karen, I believe you had asked that we learn more about this, and we've been exploring that with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Ben or, oh, Joe's back there in the corner, too. I didn't see you, I hadn't. So, Joe and Ben are here to make that presentation.
We didn't have a presentation, per se, but we're here to answer any questions on the Emerson development, any drainage issues that are out there.
What we're going to do, I think Karen wanted to show some pictures. I've got to go switch the...
Oh, then if you're going to do that, I'll make an introduction to why we're having a conversation. I brought it up two weeks ago at the council. One of the neighbors had approached me and showed me pictures of how high the rocks were in the back, the level. So, I brought, just mentioned it to the council the last time. Well, since then, they've brought me more pictures, and it was then behind their yard had the leveling of the rocks and stuff, and some moisture in their yard, but on down, like four houses or so down, and he was showing me pictures where it had just flooded this lady's yard in the back, and it reminded me like deja vu of what we went through with Dominion Homes up in, that Payne's Landing, Payne's Crossing, with Payne's Crossing with the willows behind it, because she had a narrow yard, just like what they had, and she had a deck built over, and the water was from the fence line across the fence into her yard up to almost like the corner of the deck, which one of these pictures may show that. So, and I don't know, I know there's at least two residents from the area. Is there anybody else from up there? Okay, and I assume probably most all of you all live on that back, the back of the street that connects up to this.
Yes.
Okay. And so, which I have not personally, I will say, I have not personally, I meant to get out there before we had this meeting to actually, oh, I don't think so. To actually walk it myself. No, he's can click it.
Nice try.
Yeah. I'm not like trying, I'm not trying to be challenged, I don't want everybody to know, but I didn't get out there myself to walk it, but from the pictures speak a lot of what's going on. So, that was the picture that hasn't changed from two weeks ago that was sent to me. So, Andrew, click a picture. And then that, and then...
Let me just address the rock situation.
Okay, go ahead.
The rocks at the bottom are check dams, so that's to stop silt and dirt from washing onto the adjoining property, so onto the back of these folks' lots. The rock on the slope is to stabilize and stop that erosion as well. That won't be the final appearance of that slope, and it does look very steep in that picture and high. And I went out there this morning, too, because I looked at it and thought, is it really that high? And I think being low in the yard, it looks a lot higher than it is. I don't know the height of that slope, maybe 12 feet.
Was that slope there before they started this development?
That slope was not there that I remember. I know that it was all farm field and the grade change, so it was higher in one end and lower. I mean, it dropped and they came back up. The Emerson project is a large project. It involves a lot of grading. The natural drainage of the farm went around, kind of down the middle of the farm, and then wrapped around the back of these lots. So, the natural drainage followed along the back of these lots, and there's actually a drainage easement on the back of the Emerson property and then the back 20 feet of the lots in Harmony. So, there's actually a drainage easement there that naturally funneled the water through there. This site, because of the mass grading, protected against erosion and the washing of soil by putting in these two silt fences and the check dams and kind of grading with the rocks in the slope, but the final grade will actually divert the drain, the natural drainage along the back of these lots and divert it to internal to the property. So, the drainage after completion will reduce a lot of the runoff onto these lots. It'll be internalized.
Okay, so this grading, this grading where they didn't have a mountain behind them is, they're going to have a mountain behind them now?
They will have a slope behind them. It will be, it will be, the toe will be cut back a little bit, but there'll be a slope, there'll be spot soil. It'll be regraded with topsoil. It'll be stabilized, and there'll be landscaping along the whole back of the properties.
Now, we heard that with Dominion, and that's not what ended up happening with Dominion. It flooded, the water came, and maybe we showed some other pictures. There may be things and easements that shouldn't be, but...
There will be landscapes along that back end, and there will be, I think, they bonded almost $100,000, or they're in the process of bonding for all that landscaping. Obviously, the project is a long, kind of long-term project. There are some, going to be some hiccups along the way. I mean, there's been some major storms during the development process. Let's probably go to the next pictures, but that's probably what these pictures, there's kind of another image of the slope from a distance that kind of shows you more of the, it's a better...
There's the biggest problem. I mean, I wouldn't like having, if I had flatland behind me and then I have a mountain behind me, I wouldn't be happy with that, but that is a problem.
I would agree. That's a lot of water on some of these property. I think, my understanding that this storm event was, there's one property on there that has a fence built on the back of their lot that blocks the natural flow in that drainage easement. So, it's my understanding that's a combination of water coming off-site, which it's, looks dirty, but the silt is captured in those silt fences and those rock checks, and that's water that's gotten through, but there's a fence on one lot that's backed up that water that's caused that condition or exacerbated that condition.
What else? If you look at, maybe it has, but if you look at that one, there's a lot of water being held on the other side as well, above the fence and all. So, is she going to, this person going to have to put up with that for the rest of the project until the project is finished?
In a major event, if that fence is still blocking that drainage along the back of those lots, there is going to be water backed up on those lots until the diversion. There's a, I think, in the next two months, they're grading, so there's the apartment area, there's the commercial, or there's some lots in the commercial area. They're grading that area in between the apartments and the commercial area now. They're about halfway done. When they complete that grading, they're going to cut a diversion ditch to catch all that watershed and divert it from the back of these lots. So, that should catch that, but it's...
There's nothing they can do now?
up that water that's caused that condition, or exacerbated that condition.
What else? If you look at, maybe it has, but if you look at that one, there's a lot of water being held on the other side as well, above the fence and all. So is she going to, this person gonna have to put up with that for the rest of the project until the project is finished?
In a major event, if that fence is still blocking that drainage along the back of those lots, there is gonna be water backed up on those lots until the diversion. There's a, I think, in the next two months, they're grading, so there's the apartment area, there's the commercial, or there's some lots in the commercial area. They're grading that area in between the apartments and the commercial area now. They're about halfway done. When they complete that grading, they're gonna cut a diversion ditch to catch all that watershed and divert it from the back of these lots.
Is there nothing?
So that should catch that, but it's.
Is there nothing they can do now?
Possibly. We've already had them put all those rock dams in to stop the erosion of water without building a new detention pond or something. I don't know at this point. They may be able to, Ben, it's Ben or Land Commission Engineer is here. I don't know if that's the answer for that, but the diversion ditch will solve, should solve that problem.
Isn't this the lady that owns that piece of land?
Me.
You, okay. Was that there in your backyard before they started doing all that?
It was to some point, but it's gotten worse. And I have pictures of before they started, and then after they started, and we start having this water problem. And I've tried talking to whoever's, one is over the Emerson building.
White draft.
Yeah, I forgot what his name is. And he said that he would fix it, and he'd come there and put that black plastic up. That didn't help. Then he said he would put those rocks down there. That didn't help. And now with this big wall, it's just, I mean, I've got pictures forever, but, and none of that is helping. None of it.
So it's increased since you had, you had a natural stream coming, or a little bit of a stream coming through there.
Yes.
But you didn't have.
No.
Sort of like the Derby, Karen.
That's exactly, that's exactly right, and that's why I wanted to at least have a conversation with the council now before it's all done and then it's still gonna get fixed.
There was somebody, somebody had called and mentioned about how high that property was, that they could see out, and they were curious on how high that's gonna be. Are they gonna be able to look out and see what's going on on the bypass, or they're gonna just have our airplane blow off? That's gonna be pretty high. Still gonna be high.
Do you have an elevation?
It'll be.
The difference between what was existing to what it's gonna end up being?
That's what I was mentioning. It's already up probably 20 foot, already was.
I think we should.
Hi, Kim Brooks. I'm at 249 Harmony Ridge. I'm at the area where there's going to be a parking lot and then a street and then the commercial. So I'm about halfway down Harmony Ridge. I had no, no water in my backyard ever. I've lived there since 2006 until last summer. And last summer, the water, on the heavy rains, the water did start kind of streaming at the very back near that fence line. This summer, it has gotten worse. And yes, we do have some heavy rains, but that is not abnormal. We haven't had extremely abnormal heavy rains that we don't typically have in the summer and spring. Last July, it did rain quite a bit, but this July, the heavy rains, the water is just streaming along the fence line. Now that, I think, is a little further down Harmony Ridge, so I'm assuming that the grade is going downward. But still, in my area, to have no water in my yard up until last summer and it's increased now doesn't make me very happy. So I just want to point that out, that even further up the road, we still have the streaming of the water in the back.
And that's a little bit what she says. A little bit what I'm frustrated with what's going on with all the developments in town that are happening, is we have a little bit of natural water coming through that they have to put up with, but then they take a development that comes next to them, and then they get flooded out, and then their yard goes from damp to soggy or not being able. So the correlation is not because some neighbor has a fence backing it up a little bit. The correlation is because the development behind it is dumping water. Now, I'll give the gentleman credit, or at least you've proximity, at least he made an attempt. But you have a pond in your yard, and that is ridiculous to have a pond in her yard because the development behind it has, is in the process of developing, and they're creating problems for the neighbors behind it and decreasing their property values.
Yes.
If you were to go to sell your house right now, and especially now that we've brought it in front of the city council, everybody knows your yard floods, then you have a problem selling your house. And it's not fair for the development behind you to decrease the value of your development, of what you have and the joy that you have to be out into your yard and what you want to do with your yard.
How long, how long does it take for that to run down?
No time. The water goes down quickly, but the mud stays.
Mud, yes.
And it's cracking. Now, if there's not water, it's cracked mud.
Mud.
Joe, what is the timeline on finishing the grading that you mentioned, what addresses this problem?
Two months is my understanding.
What is the status of that? A homeowner's fence doesn't create the entire problem.
No.
Make no mistake about it, we learned in Derby Estates that fences in a flood plain or a waterway do make a difference. Have we spoken with the property owner whose fence is in the drainage area?
I have not.
Ben, will he talk to him? Or will he, maybe he refuses to talk unless he spoke.
Can you ask the question again? Yeah. Joe mentioned a fence that was contributing to some of our getting back up. Has anyone talked with that property owner about the location of that fence?
I have not talked with that, with the owner of that. Would that be your fence?
That's the address.
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. There's, there's one solid fence that goes all the way back to, goes all the way back to the Emerson fence right there, and it's, it kind of splits the drainage way. It could slow the water down some. This is.
Is that it in that corner? Is that a fence in that corner up there?
Yeah.
It's right there.
Yeah, that's probably, yeah. And there, there are several fences that go all the way back to the end.
But if those fences are on their property line, if they're on their property, it should be an issue for them. It's an issue for us trying to figure out how to fix it.
Right.
Although we, actually Marvin, in Derby, we found a lot of places where people could have built on their property line, but it was in the.
But I just said, if it was on their property line, it's not an issue for them. It's still an issue trying to figure out how to work it out.
Thank you. You're exactly right.
Right, and even with that, if there's a, there's a simple, maybe a semi-simple solution, unless you have a small dog that you're trying to keep in, but you can always cut underneath the fence to let, so the fence goes to the ground, you could cut up six inches or eight inches or 10 inches to let the water run on through and under, not to have to remove the whole fence. But I kind of don't think it's fair to tell a neighbor that, oh, you gotta cut, you gotta cut your fence down now, or you gotta fix your fence, when, yes, that was part of the problem, but it's this much of the problem, and now they have this much of a problem, so we're putting the blame back on the residents instead of putting the blame on the development, that the multi-million dollar development that's causing problem for people that are not multi-millionaires.
Just to be clear, I'm not putting the blame on anybody. I'm trying to understand the issue.
But I'm talking in general. They were talking about a fence and putting the, did you all not feel like that was coming back on you all? Yes. So what I am saying is, that's part of the, maybe that's part of the problem, but it's a small problem. The big problem is directly coming behind it, just like it has so many times that we have seen it from other developers that have put, put it on someone else instead of us making them take care of that situation and taking it back to where it was in the beginning for the citizen instead of doing that. What we did is we told you to fix your fence. No, tell them to fix it and get it right so that water quits coming over onto their property. They were there, they didn't have a problem, they didn't have anything they needed to come into here, and now they do. And if it was my home, as you can tell, I'm upset. I would be mad. So I'm, calm down.
Well, I'm assuming the people that put the wooden fence up followed the lined fence, the wrought iron fence up through there anyway. I mean, that fence went from one end of the property to the other.
On the inside.
And you're on the inside of that, of that, right, right.
I had, I complained, they came out and they told me, since all the flooding started, I've got like seven inches of runoff, dirt that's built up along my fence line. There used to be gaps under it where rabbits would come in and whatever. I don't have anything there, so that's why they're saying it's stopped in the water. They told me I need to dig that away from there.
It's the mud where it slid in.
Yeah, but it's seven inches, because I dug down into it. I can't do that. And my fence is down rotten over at one end.
Yes, in the back of your yard, it is 100 percent, you've got privacy fence, 100 percent in the backyard. When I met with her, she showed me the dirt line that was on, on the fence, and we went over the development, what was going on. It's temporary. I said I would talk with the developers, and I did. But I said, part of the problem is water can sit there in your yard longer because the fence goes all the way to the ground.
I didn't have a problem with it.
Right. And not, before, before development and after development, there is, there's always a difference. I'll be the first to tell you. You've got water coming off grassy fields. It is gonna be different than water coming off a construction site. They do the rock checks, the silt fence and all that stuff, but it does not catch, it does never catch 100 percent of the muddy water. I mean, that's, you're always gonna have that. There are certain, we've got regulations that they have to adhere to for certain storm events. It is not 100 percent ever any of the time. This is, I guess as Joe was explaining, this is an interim situation. When I talked to the engineers, they said, yes, all this, the runoff, it was a grassy field of several acres came down to the backyard. There's actually an inlet, probably a first or second picture. There is an inlet in the backyard that has the open fence that, that was there in the beginning of construction, and there is a drainage easement along the fence. Several acres of grass came down that way. During development now, there's a couple acres of bare dirt that comes down, follows right along that fence line, tries, has to get in that inlet. That's the only place it can go right now. That water will go away as soon as they finish building this fill up here. That will capture everything and take it, keep it internal to the development. So runoff hasn't increased. It is different. It's a, it's a different makeup now in this, in this interim situation. When I talked to them before, they did go out, was told, and they built up additional rock layers to try to slow the water down even more. I'm assuming those pictures were from the last hard rain we had, downpour we had, so.
We've got pictures too.
The law was the same.
They are from the last rain that we just.
Oh, no, that's not the full time.
So that, that pictures are back from April or something?
Yeah. For about a year.
You've got the video too. You tried to send it to me, and it wouldn't go. Karen is there? Can she send that to an email or something other?
Yeah.
Because it really shows the water and what happens.
Andrew, can she send it to the email?
Yeah.
Okay, if you could just, if you could download that onto a thumb drive or something, and then give it to, you can give it to me or Howard or Bridge the City or whatever, and I'll, I'll bring it. Well, Bree, this conversation probably won't get settled tonight or be over tonight. It's the way these conversations work, but if maybe in the meantime, maybe Marcy can tell you, figure out how to use it, and you can download it later and bring it back to us.
She has an iPad and it doesn't fit in there.
No, it won't fit in that. So is there anything more that you can ask them to do currently to slow that down? So the next rain, there's not a pool in the yard?
The, the best thing in the entire situation would be to, I think what I, what I talked to them about today was could they finish the whole backside, get that grassed, get landscaping in, and get the water going the other way. Now, they, they are not quite in a position, like Joe said, a couple more months is what they said, to get the final fill in. But they could start, could start backfilling. Of course, once they do that, they need to take out the big rocks and redo that, and that will be grass and landscaping, trees and bushes and things along, along their back fence. And there will not, you talked about a view over there. It'll be, it'll be landscaped, is what I understand the final configuration will be. So, yeah.
Ben, have, do you feel like you have adequately communicated to the owners and the owners' engineers that this is not acceptable, that this must be improved? I agree with these folks. This is pretty untenable. If there are solutions to come, I want assurances, number one, that the solutions are gonna be put in as designed, and number two, these folks see the outcome that they deserve to see.
Yes, I will, I will request again, from, from what I can tell, they, they are meeting the current regulations that we have. So whatever, whatever they do would be above and beyond. This developer has done things above and beyond in the past, and I will.
Mr. Anderson has done things above and beyond in the past. I think the council needs, council needs you all to communicate this back to the owner and the engineers, that we're hearing from the public. What we see today is not satisfactory, and we expect an outcome that is different and more acceptable to their neighbors.
I will communicate that, Mayor.
Okay, well, then I have a question for you. Okay, he's doing everything that we have requested for him to do. All right, what is it that we as a city, as planning and zoning, is missing in our regulations that will stop this problem from happening over and over and over again? There's something missing. We've had, we've had two, since this council's been together, two situations, and, and we've had a third recently. So what are we missing in our regulations that are allowing flooding coming from one developer over to citizens or neighborhoods that are already established? What are we missing? There is something, and I am not a developer. I don't know, but I know enough to know that I am upset for these folks, that they are coming to us, and this is a third time recently. So what are we missing?
I'm not familiar with the previous situations, but in this situation in particular, the muddy water is.
And how do we stop that? That's just not fair.
I.
What are we, in the future, what do we need to require to be done, or how do we need to change our ordinances to stop this?
With the, other than completely saying there can't be a large development next to any existing subdivision, during the process, there's some mess made. If this process is, if this is gonna stay looking like this, it's unacceptable. If this is gonna look different and the water's gonna behave differently after they complete the process, that's a different conversation. I don't think we can ever say that we're gonna be the fastest growing city in the, in the state and never have a mess from one neighborhood to another. Might be unrealistic, but it's not unrealistic to get an outcome that people live with long term.
Well, I don't accept that, Mayor, for the simple fact, I think you have been dealing with this for two years. So, and the lady back there says two years. Okay, so if I'm dealing with this for two months or summer, okay, I'll deal with it. But if I'm dealing with it with two years and we're still heading into more time, then no, I don't think that's acceptable to allow somebody else to ruin your peace of mind that you have. I am an outdoor person. I am in my yard all the time and love flowers and all that. I couldn't have, if I had your yard, I couldn't have any flowers in my yard. I couldn't have my dog out in my yard.
Here's my thought. We're, we're having an ongoing conversation with our developers about a number of things in the subdivision development regs that need to be tweaked. And there's always room for the land disturbance permit requirements to be strengthened. The critical thing is it has to be a conversation with the stakeholders, both the residents and the developers, about what, what the needs are and what, how much is too much. And we're willing to have that conversation and talk about if our, if our land disturbance were. our, if our land disturbance requirements are not strong enough to protect the homeowners. Or, you know, in some places, the developers may think they're too onerous, or maybe they have a, a different solution, a different way we can handle it. But we'll commit to have that conversation. I mean, I think that's the best we can do because we have, right now, we have a set law on what the land disturbance permit requires. And, and according to Ben, they're meeting those guidelines. So it suggests that it may need to be tweaked. But we need to, that needs to be part of a, of a two-way conversation.
And, and is, do you all like having a barbed wire fence behind you? I'm sure you like having a fence behind you, but it's got barbed wire across the top of it. You all are in jail. So.
Well, that's been there for years though.
Yeah, that came.
That was beginning.
Yeah, that's what he said.
That's been there for years.
Yes, sir.
Howard Testament, I'm 251 Harmony Ridge. Looking at the developments, I sat through the planning and zoning when they was first talking about this. My understanding back then was that they were, they were going to plant the trees. I think it was mentioned a walking path or something or other back there. But I had always envisioned that the slope of the farm was going to stay because Harmony Ridge is that way. They kept, you know, the natural contours pretty much out there. Now, and where the water problem comes in at, I think, is we've got nine, 10-foot elevation change between one property to the next. Once grass is planted, that takes care of some of the water. But still yet, we're down in a hole now. And the new property is setting up, you know, a 10-foot elevation above us. And I think that's where the problem is. And I had never envisioned that, to look out my back door and see it, a mountain. And, you know, matter of fact, we've spent two years looking at a mountain that they created for topsoil out there. And I overlooked that because that's part of construction. But now, this is looking like a final grave. They're leveling. And it's terrible. And so now, you know, when you're standing up on that dirt, now you're looking at my second floor, basically. I mean, come out and, and walk over on the Emerson side.
I know.
And look and see what you see. You're looking straight back toward our second floor. So it's like we're sitting down in a hole and everything else is going to be up above. And, you know, I think something could have been done different. Basically, I think right through there is slated for homes. Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, why couldn't they have sloping backyards like we have instead of that big high elevation? You know, once they start building homes in there, their first floors, they're going to be looking in our second floor. And, you know, that, that just wasn't the envision, the vision I had from the original P&amp;Z meetings and, and the original plans that they, they brought out. And, you know, they assured us that we'd have nice landscaping and everything would be all nice and neat and, and all of that. But, well, I think the picture speaks for itself.
In the initial planning and zoning, when Emerson brought that and the engineers, did they show that that was going to be that way?
No.
Not in the zone change. No. I mean, it's.
But what about in the?
Yeah. It was shown in the preliminary development plan. But, I mean, you can't expect the neighbors to interpret the grades necessarily on a preliminary development plan. But yeah, it did show the grades as, as they are now.
But isn't that what you all were supposed to do?
Yeah. But that, you know.
But you don't have to live there and look at it, right?
They met our slope, you know, our maximum slope, their landscaping and their grading. It's not going to look like a, you know, a rocky hillside when it's done. And, you know, it will be landscaped and it'll be buffered from the, from the neighborhood. And that is the natural drainage area. That's kind of why they built it up. And the, and the drainage won't come from the whole site down under the subdivision. They've got it built up so it drains away at the top of the slope. So the only water now will be from that, that slope into the drainage easement. So, yeah, I mean, I understand. I understand the elevation issue, especially if you live in a lot right adjacent to it. We've had, you know, the, another issue in the last year with residential abutting commercial where they, they didn't like the, the activity on the commercial lot. I mean, one, one solution, not a solution, but one suggestion might be to, you know, increase our buffer standards, you know, require that to be left its, its, you know, undisturbed. Any buffer adjoining residential then, you know, they would have had to work with the grades adjoining to, adjoining the subdivision and, you know, at least leave those grades. But it, I mean, projects like this, large projects that have mass grading, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna work their project in order to capture the, the runoff on site. And that, this is how it worked out. I mean, that, that slope, I understand if you live adjacent to it, it's not what you're used to seeing, used to looking on that farm field.
Which was flat. It joined the.
Which, which was rolling, but it was high on one end and low on, on the other end. But.
I had a question. What kind of buffers do other communities have? Is what we have, similar?
Yeah. Ours is adopted from the Lexington standards.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, it's similar to, all the adjoining counties in the Bluegrass typically had worked from Lexington standards and amended them over time. We have a 15-foot landscape buffer, which isn't as significant, but if you get small lots.
Help, you know, just having that little wide.
Yeah. I mean, they doubled that. They included a 30-foot landscape buffer on this project. But, you know, if you go up to 50, something like that, it's hard to develop any smaller commercial lots. But.
Yeah. I don't think they would mind, I don't really think the citizens would mind if it was, they backed right up to that fence, if they weren't getting now a hill backing up to the fence, like it was their subdivision here and you were going right on over to this. And maybe there was, you know, three foot elevation or something. But you go from this to this. But you're telling, you're telling them that it's going to be okay when this finishes, is what I'm hearing you tell the citizens that are there. What if it gets finished and it's all done and Ms. Linda, Ms. Linda comes back, or Mr. Testament comes back to me and they say, here's my pictures from my backyard. And it looks the same, almost, maybe it's a little less, but it basically looks the same. Then when I come back in here, what are you going to say? What can you say at that point?
You mean the same in terms of drainage?
If the drainage doesn't.
A drainage problem is still there?
If it doesn't improve to the fact she gets her yard back to where it was before this development happened, then what do we do?
At that point, I think it's an engineering problem.
And who fixes it?
Well, I mean, if it's an error in the engineering, in the calculations, then the, the developer would have to correct it. Would be my interpretation of it. But, I mean, it's hard to speculate on.
Well, that's what I'm wanting, is some hope from them. Because it sounds like you're going to go back and talk and see if they can do anything better. But you're still not giving them any hope. But I want her yard and their yards to go back to where it was before this started. So it doesn't have to be better than what it was before this started. But it needs to go back to that because they deserve that. So if it doesn't, that's what I want to know, then.
It has to be a little bit of flexibility because we do require a grading plan. Are those grading plans actually signed off by an engineer?
Mm-hmm.
And so, so what you're saying is a professional engineer has put a stamp on a plan that says when this is all built, it will gra, it will drain properly. The, the disconnect is between what happens between when that plan is designed and the, all the grading and development that takes place before then. And that goes back to what I said earlier, maybe there's a need for strengthening of the land disturbance permit. That's, that's what governs the in-between, the design and the final product.
Okay. Well, I hope you're right on that. I just don't have a lot of, I don't have a lot of faith in it because of issues we've seen over and over and over. With, even though the professional signed off, as the old saying goes, the professional built the Titanic, the amateur built the ark. And that's what I'm afraid. I don't want her to have to have an ark in her backyard. So.
Well, we don't want to see it fall back to the city either.
No.
In, after the fact situation. And if I'm not mistaken, that's what's happened in the past.
Several.
I haven't, I haven't heard of any engineer stepping up to fix a $2 million problem, have you?
Well, I mean, this, this property will, will stay under the Emerson, Emerson's ownership. So if he's continuing, I mean, if it's complete, he's still going to own the, you know, the project department complex. So if there's any problem that's still there when it's complete, it's going to be his responsibility to fix any, you know.
Our biggest concern is, is when Dominion Homes started moving all of that dirt and stuff. And not all of that happened on Willow Lane. There were engineers involved at that point. But there were things that happened that we, we weren't aware of until after the fact. And because they followed your plan and your regs, there wasn't anything that we can do. And that, we ended up, they, they paid part of it, but it was a problem. And the, the one before was Derby.
Derby.
That had already been, that'd been there for a while. So with this being brought to our attention like right now, in the middle of all of this, that it's a big concern, that, that's something that we definitely want to make sure that it's done where their, their yards are where they ought to be. They, they have the right to, to have that. And I understand when you start grading and moving dirt and stuff, you're changing the contour and the natural flow of the land. But some engineers got to figure out that it should be came back over on their existing property that they want. I'd get what Karen's saying.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is for you. When is the completion date of the entire project estimated?
We don't know that. It's 91 acres and they've developed probably about 25 of it so far. So I would say 10, 10 years.
That's just the south road.
Yeah. I would say 10 plus years to complete.
So is that how long?
At the current.
Is that how long we get it?
No. I mean, it, it's being developed incrementally. So a lot of that land is, you know.
What about this part?
In a different watershed.
How long would you give this part before it's fixed?
Two months.
Two months. From today?
Well.
Two years.
Well, I mean, all I can tell you is that the, the engineer for the developer said that they need to complete that grading of the, of the area next to the apartments. And then they'll cut the ditch. They can't cut a diversion ditch to collect all the water from that, that watershed right there until they finish the grading. And then that should divert.
So when the trees are planted, how much higher is that going to be? Because right now, it's over my roof of my house.
The hill, the slope?
It's the slope.
The slope should be about, it might be a foot or two. I, I can check on it. A foot or two higher. They're going to move the rock and everything and then put topsoil and then plant the trees. So the slope itself should.
We're going to see trees. We're not going to see that. You're going to actually plant the trees in the ditch part.
Um, the, yeah.
Right behind that fence.
Further than the top.
Still up there.
By the fence, not at the top.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that fence going to be removed eventually?
Please?
Is that fence going to be removed eventually?
No, the, they will not touch the metal fence.
Okay.
The chain link there.
Yeah, because that was.
I think Harmony Ridge had to put that in when they developed to protect Emerson Farms from, you know, people climbing.
That's why the barbed wire is up there.
Okay, okay.
But with this all going on, what I've noticed is nobody's doing any maintenance along the backside on the Emerson side with tucking the grass. And now there's trees growing up into that fence and around it and through it right at the fence line.
Yeah.
We take care of that. We'll make a call.
I'll thank you.
Thank you. Is there supposed to be a road up on the top of that cliff?
Cliff. Man.
Yeah.
There, it will be street from just where the apartment building is. There's a parking lot on this side of it. And then it'll be a street at the top of there.
What, will people throw trash over on us?
Nothing.
Not for trees.
Nothing.
Yeah. There's landscaping and the buffers there. It'll be the only thing.
Mayor. Yes, sir. Would it be possible between now and our next council meeting, or maybe either the first council meeting in.
September.
August?
August.
Or the second council meeting in August. Maybe to even ask a representative from the development.
Yeah.
Before us. And there's obviously concerns just from a few homeowners that are here. It could be more. It could be beneficial to at least extend the offer to ask that somebody from the development come for us.
And I, I want to piggyback on what Mark's saying because I was thinking the same thing. And they're saying two months. Two months from today is September the 25th. That's our, our la, our second council meeting. Maybe that might be the time that they might want to come. I'm just throwing this out. If they're saying two months from now, we have rain, we go through the weather, we go through the process, and they can come and explain to us if it's not done what they say, what they're going to do to make it where it wants.
Make it right.
I understand they're going to be able to answer it better.
What they have said two months was the completion of the field where they could cut and then divert all the flow.
Right.
The other way. Not all the flow, still the flow from the back of the slope. So I don't know if they would be completely complete with all that.
But you all said that they said when in two months, that's going to eliminate some of the flow going into their yard. Is that not a correct statement?
That would probably eliminate 90 percent from what was there in the beginning.
Okay.
That's significant.
What about damage that the flood has caused already to some properties? Like the fence, it's rotting. Where the water sits there for a while. And you can see it on the fence line and dirt.
Can you bring that to their attention as well? I mean, the dirt at the fence because of the runoff of the water, it wasn't there prior to.
Is there a plan to fix the damages that have been caused?
I'm going to take that.
You know, we, that's why the gentleman needs to come.
Yeah.
If there are damage, significant damages.
That's what we really have to do.
Then we can investigate.
The developer that there is potential of damages. And what, what is their answer and recommendation still take care of?
We could relate to them that there's claimed damages out there.
That chain link fence, is the drainage easement 20 feet on their side of that fence?
On their side, I'm not.
So they can expect to have water on 20 feet from the fence?
That's the whole backyard.
That's, that's the way, that's the way the subdivision developer did it, though. There is a drainage easement there. That's what Joe's saying.
Well, I, I knew that there was a, a utility easement through there. Didn't realize that it was a drainage easement through there.
Is that on the original flat, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah. But here, still, even if there is a drainage easement through there, utility easement, all that. So there's an easement through there. But the bottom line is, they had this much water and now they have this much water. And they were living with this much water and that was okay. But why do we give the right to the person next to them to put on that much water? Even if they've got that easement and before they were living with this, I still don't understand why we let, we let them live with this. But.
That, that easement was there before they started all that construction on the other side. And that construction's what's built.
I understand what, what has happened, but I don't understand why we let it do that.
Well, bottom line is that we, we, we as a council approved the zoning and we approved annexation of zoning and we approved growth in our community. But we also represent this community here. And we just, we, we need answers. And they want answers. And that's what we're asking for.
I guess the big question, the big answer would be is like at the end of the day, they had this much water in the beginning. Now they have this much. And when they finish, can they go back to this much? That's what they want to know.
That's their plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's their plan.
That's the plan.
And if the damages get fixed.
And, yeah, that needs to be addressed.
Well, that's not hard to figure out because all the dirt's on the opposite side of the fence. That's where it's going to rot at.
Well, like Karen said, it can't be remedied tonight. But at least it's been brought to our attention and those are issues that can be addressed for now.
And thank you all for feeling comfortable enough to come to one of us to tell us what's going on because we didn't have a clue as to what was going on. because we didn't have a clue as to what was going on. So now all the council understands and is aware of it.
I will say I work from my home. That white chair is mine.
It's not flowing away.
Not yet.
If it's not flowing away, right. But you're welcome to come over and, and observe from my backyard and I'm sure the customer's backyard because I am home. If you, if you wish.
When it's pouring rain, I'll be over, I promise.
What, what is that address?
Just to watch.
There you go.
One minute, what's that address?
It's 249 Harmony Ridge.
Or 251.
Right side, right side you come up.
And who does the one you need to see in the wreck?
Yeah.
It's 243.
241.
How much water have you had in your backyard?
Well, like I said, as of last summer, I didn't have any water in my backyard when it rained, no matter how much. Well, I take that back. I think one time since 2006, prior to last summer, I had some water in, near the fence. But since I've had, it's a stream. And I, I thought I had some pictures, I still may, I was trying to thumb through them, but I didn't, I didn't find them before I spoke. Yeah, so that's my yard.
That's your chair?
That's my chair. And the customers live here and they're, in the last past heavy rains, there's a stream visible flowing down through the back of that.
Does, does your all's yard kind of slope downward towards the fence?
It slows down.
A little bit.
Yeah, that, that, that looks like.
And, you know, in all the hard rains before this, we would get maybe some standing water while it rained. But now it flows through there.
Yeah.
So it's no longer just standing and it dries up when it quits raining. Now it flows through and goes down and sees and hangs out with limbs.
Thank you.
To, to get back to answer Mark's question. I'm more than happy to ask a representative of the developer to be here at whatever time the council wants, Mark. If you'd like to be for it, one of the meetings in August to show substantial progress toward this goal. It's, it's whatever the council wants, we'll do our best to get the right people here to talk with you. So if you'd like to make it the first meeting in August or the second meeting in August to see some progress off all your all's direction.
I would think the second meeting, you would see more progress than what you're seeing right, you know, in weeks, so, yeah.
Give them, you know.
At least give them about a month, get something going, see what it looks like.
Because they were up to our house today getting the grade.
See how much they're going to cut out and grow them, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I assume they're going to do that all the way up to Schoolhouse Road. And that's where it'll stop at because it's all going uphill.
So then if we look at the second meeting in August, we're looking at the 28th? While we worked on that, and will you, will you all, should we contact the owner or will you all contact the owner?
I think we can do that.
If you would, you, you've heard all these concerns, so make sure you relay them accurately. And the concerns of the council and that by the August the 28th, we'd like to see them. We'd like to hear from them and see substantial progress on, on this concern.
Thank you.
I'm just looking at the weather. It's going to be raining the next 15 days quite a bit, just FYI.
12:00 on Thursday afternoon.
The first time, one potential solution, if we can, if we can go back to it a minute or two longer, maybe agreeable. But first time I looked at this, I did not approve. I would just recently have come back. But so first time I looked at it, the inlet that's in your backyard, I was like, why didn't, why didn't they just connect to that with a pipe? And run it on the other side of the fence? Now, they probably could do that fairly easily if you would let them, let them connect to that. That would stop.
Puddling, cooling.
Now, the developer would have to agree to that as well, but they would have to get inside your yard. They would connect to the pipe that's there. There's probably going to be utilities.
Well, you have to come to the beach down there. Do you want to build that backyard so much to go over to rent?
Right. But they, but you, you've got an inlet with a grate on top of it, so water drops down into it. They could come out of that and make a lower spot, a spot that's lower than your yard. Assuming they could get through the utilities and everything along that fence line. There would be a second inlet back there. So if you, if you would be in favor of something like that, then I will suggest that to them as well.
Well, if we can look at it better, because I need a better understanding of what you're talking about. I have something in vision, but it may not be what you have in vision. Get it together.
So you are, you're at 239 Harmony Ridge.
239?
Yes.
Welcome back, Ben.
He'd, he'd evaluate that opportunity and again, you're right, that's a homeowner's decision.
It's right.
That if they would be agreeable and the developer would pay the cost, then it might really be something.
When Harmony, when Harmony came in, they did build up. A lot of those homes are 10 feet or so above the property line. They, I mean, the developer probably would have liked to have gone on the other side of the property line and put in pipes and stuff. But they couldn't do that. I mean, it was a farm at that time, so they put the inlets in the backyard where they were allowed to.
An ideal.
Thank you all for taking the time.
Thank you.
To come talk with the council. And it sounds like there's a couple of fairly good ideas that can be explored. And a real willingness of the council to hold people accountable for what's supposed to happen. Thank you and we look forward to continuing this conversation in August if that's our view.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And you all can stick around for some real exciting other business.
They've had enough.
Hey Karen, Karen, Johnson grass along that fence.
I noticed that, I go help him cut that down.
There you go, you helped cut that down.
She wants to decorate with it.
Is she really? For what?
For flower arrangements.
Oh, really?
For you go in. For Johnson grass, yes, great.
She's been here over on Oxford Drive.
Counsel, we, we had, at the last meeting, I had, or a couple of times, I may have made reference to some, some outside partners that I'd, I'd seen presentations from about energy savings, light savings. And in, and in particular, what captured my eye was lighting outcomes. Where, where, when I visited, these folks are from Harshaw Train Company, which is an industry leader in, in, in energy savings and energy consulting. I visited their office in Louisville to look firsthand at some of the management concepts and the consulting concepts that they've helped cities with. And Anthony Wright, I've known for years. He worked for Kentucky League of Cities, he worked for the city of Lexington. And now he's working with, with Harshaw Train. And, and his sidekick Slater is.
Been called worse.
But, but one of, one of the only certified lighting specialists in Kentucky. I don't think there's many of you, are there?
No, we're, we're a rare breed.
You're a rare breed. And the presentation that I saw when I visited their office included things that we will talk with them about in the future. Our building energy needs, our efforts to redo City Hall and the way that they may be able to help us with those concepts. But, but I, after the council responded positively to, to the discussion about street lighting. And that is a very current thing for us with dark spots and where. Anthony, we've got stretches of straight, of state right of way that are not lit that we're willing to, for our citizens to, to put that cost into place. I was really taken by the video that you all showed of some Kentucky cities where you change streetlights for them. In, in brief conversations, Anthony has already helped Andrew with some changes we will make to our, we propose to make to our electric franchise ordinance when we finally get to it. About giving us the options of different kind of head zone telephone poles.
Oh, good.
KU owns the pole. They own the wiring. But they may not have to own the, the device that produces the elimination.
Okay.
Just, there, there's a whole laundry list of things that we will eventually talk with these folks about. But I think our most pressing need today is with streetlights, Anthony. And if, if you all could give us just a, a brief presentation about what your capacities are and how you might be able to help Georgetown with this need we have.
Good. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Anthony Wright and I confess that I'm an engineer. But I think, as Tom has said, we really thank you for the opportunity to share with your council today. And I think that in terms of our presentation, the hours fair is long spent, we, we recognize that. So we'll move quickly through some of the other things that we do and the focus will be on street lighting. Again, Slater is with me and he is my brain as it relates to, to lighting. We do about $4 million a year in lighting in the state of Kentucky right now. And, and this guy is very involved in doing a lot of it. So thank you very much again for the opportunity. I want to start out by just talking a little bit about who we are. I think it's fair to, to share with them a little bit about who we are and what we do to give you some context before we go into the discussion on street lighting. We are a Kentucky company. Again, the name is Harshaw Train. And we are part of Ingersoll Rand and Train, you know, Hard to Stop a Train. Frank Harshaw owns the Kentucky franchise, okay? And we serve Kentucky, most of the, the counties and cities in Kentucky. And then about 14 counties in southern Indiana. We, we do have a lot of engineers on our staff. If you look at that first lineup there, we have 44 degree engineers. If you really look at it from the standpoint of our technical expertise, we really rival some of the largest engineering firms in the state by the number of engineers we have on our staff. But I think the other thing to import out is the, the various certifications that we have and the talent of our resources and our people to be able to serve folks like you. To do a great job of delivering projects. And then what our other very big important part of what we do is, is to sustain those savings over the years to come, okay? But yes, we are Kentucky company. We are headquartered in Louisville, Kentucky. We have offices in Lexington, Louisville, of course, Bowling Green. And then we have an office in Evansville, Indiana. We've also done a lot of work with Fort Knox and really had an office there as well. And we're starting to pick up a little bit of an office in, in Calvert City in western Kentucky. But again, we're Kentucky, we're all over Kentucky. That, that bottom bullet there shows about 80 plus certified factory technicians. I've served in local government like all of you. And one of the things that we've always looked at when we did projects with folks, we partnered with folks is that if I have a problem, am I going to be able to find you some years later down the line? And I'm pleased to say that we have our folks nearby and you can always get ahold of us. That's going to be an important piece to remember. This is earning customers, customers for life. It's basically our philosophy. If you think about the standpoint of the life of a building and the customer in the middle of it, we are there at all phases of the life of that building. And I think that's a pretty unique offering that our organization has here in Kentucky. We're there at the design and construction phase, so very early on, when you're dealing with architects and engineers and, and you're, you've got the planning, plan and spec buildings. We put in the HVAC equipment to get the buildings up and going, okay? But then again, we're also there after you've been in that building for 10, 15, 20 years. And we have a parts and distribution area where we can actually serve in parts and replacement of parts. As well as a service business that obviously comes out in services, equipment that we have throughout the state. And then finally, in that area where you see the yellow restored, modernized, Slater and myself, our team works on, it's time to refresh the building. It's been around 15, 20 years. There are definitely some things that could be improved. Equipment's better now. We've put in more efficient equipment and then pay for those upgrades by the savings that we can drive, okay? Just a little bit about our success. We are the largest provider in Energy Star Buildings in Kentucky. Now, Energy Star is important because elite certification and all of that is important. And Tom will tell you, we practice what we preach. Our building is a lead building, okay? But we also are an Energy Star building. And the reason why that's important is because it's more than just how the building is designed, it's how it's operating. How, how does it perform with lighting levels? How does it perform with HVAC? How does it perform as it relates to the overall building envelope? Those things are important when we look at the overall performance of a building. And we are the largest provider in Kentucky. We're really approaching half a billion dollars in energy improvements in Kentucky. We have a number of projects that are underway this year, so that number is, is actually growing. And that's really across all of the verticals that we serve. Local government is definitely one of those. And I've been basically focused on that as I've been a member of Harshaw Train's team. But we also do K to 12. Healthcare is a very big market for us. Fort Knox is in and of itself a huge entity. So we have federal contracting as well as another big important vertical for us. As a matter of fact, as we talk about Fort Knox, if it was incorporated, I know Tom likes to talk about Georgetown as six large, six largest city in Kentucky. If Fort Knox was incorporated, it would be the fifth or sixth largest city in Kentucky. We are all over Fort Knox. We drove the energy consumption down all over that base, about 50% in the 13 years that we've been there. And mind you, that's at a time that the base has grown, okay? So you got energy going down, population going up. And we still were able to maintain those savings that we produced for them. We've had a number of certifications and recognitions by the Secretary of the Army. It's pretty cool to have the Secretary of the Army come down and say, you guys are the best. It is the most energy efficient military base in the country. And we've done that.
That's impressive.
Multiple cities and counties and we, this next slide shows you some of the references, some of the other cities that we've done work with. The city of Bowling Green, I like to put that one on there. That one is, is not because it's one of the largest cities in Kentucky, but it's one of those where we've done multiple projects. Bowling Green is one of the few cities that has done more than one performance contract. And they did them both with us. So that says something. You went through a full term of the contract, satisfied the engineering, engineering and energy savings of the contract. And then when you do it again, you go back and choose the same thing. That's a pretty strong reference. But the, the city of Williamsburg, city of Greensburg, Fulton Hickman, those are also local government cities that we've worked with. And in the case of Fulton and Hickman, they are the only two cities in the state of Kentucky that have been fully deployed LED lighting, street lighting. And we did those. So it's an important thing to point out here. Fort Knox, we've talked about that. I've got a couple of schools on there, Dambler Independent and Frankfurt Independent Schools. Because again, that is a very big market for us. We did a lot of work in K to 12 schools before we even got into local government. And as a matter of fact, your superintendent of schools here, Dr. Hub, he was in Logan County. We did a project with him in Logan County. So he knows us and knows our work. And then healthcare, I put that on there because we do a lot of work in healthcare right now. Kentucky one is listed on there. So why do we do all of this? The trends, the rising costs that we're seeing in energy and utilities. Obviously, that, that trend for electric has been consistently going up. We've been seeing situations where it's been up to double digit increases year over year in energy rates. Gas, of course, went ray high and dropped back down with the shale gas. Certainly brings an opportunity for a lot more cost reduction. We actually do a lot more now with natural gas again than we did with geothermal. We did a lot of work with geothermal. Most of the work that we did at Fort Knox, we had geothermal systems installed. A lot of pipe in the ground to be able to take, harness the energy from the earth itself. But because the prices for gas have come down, it now makes sense to go back to doing a lot more with gas than our geothermal systems. So what we're basically talking about is utilizing energy savings to upgrade infrastructure. I've been in local government and I've worked at the League of Cities and worked with a lot of other local government. And certainly understand the issue of, boy, we have a capital improvement we need to do. Boy, we got a piece of equipment we need to replace. Boy, there's some changes to our facilities we'd love to make, but we simply don't have the budget to do it. What I like about this program and what I like about this approach is it, it basically allows you to get those deferred maintenance issues addressed by using money you're already spending. You pay for it with the savings that you drive over the project. You pay for it with the savings that you drive over the project. And so we basically are talking about equipment replaces HVAC, lighting, windows, roofs, doors, you know, the building envelope. We tie it with building automation and Tom had an opportunity to see some of the work that we do with our intelligent services program, which is real-time energy monitoring, tied in with controls that says, based upon how you are operating that building, there's a way that you can tweak the building's performance so that you can actually take action with the information and the data that you see. So you can make changes on when equipment is on and off, taking advantage of savings that you might see on off-peak hours of electric system. And then, of course, that drives energy savings and then new revenue. The new revenue is what's used to pay for, again, the project and the upgrades that's done. And again, that system optimization, that's really what we're talking about by tweaking it and getting it to continually operate efficiently and effectively so that you see all the performance that you're looking for in the buildings. We mutually identify what those opportunities are. We certainly design and implement, that's our role, to put that into place. And then, of course, we come back and measure and verify to make sure that the savings we're seeing, at least once a year, we come back and talk to you about whether or not you're on track, okay? So again, it's that continuous improvement approach as we are here in the city of Georgetown and we think about Toyota right up the road. Continuous improvement. It's one of those things that we look at from a continuous commissioning standpoint. How do you keep the building operating effectively? And so all of this is important because a lot of people spend a lot of time in the upfront cost of buildings and equipment. How much does it cost to get in it and I need enough money to do that? But the really, the real cost is the ongoing cost. Once you are in it, how are you operating? These are the kinds of things that also come up when you're actually in a building, once you get it energy efficient. The key is how do you keep it that way? And it's the partnership model that I really appreciate from our organization that we have with folks like you to make sure that you continue to see the performance and improvement that you're looking for. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my brain on lighting and we'll transition our conversation to street lighting and LED lighting. So Slater?
Thanks. My name is Slater Medley and I oversee the lighting business program for Harshaw Train. And as Anthony said, lighting's an integral part of what we do. As a society, we take it, take it for granted until it's not good anymore, so there's a problem, right? So, there's a lot of math, a lot of science that goes into what we do for lighting and that's my focus, is what I live in, day in and day out. So it's allowed us to have a bit of a competitive advantage in what we do every day because we focus on that. So what are some things that are important with lighting, just in general? And I know we're talking about street lighting, a lot of these things apply to any application. So, one of the things we talk about is the environment and the economy. So, think of a retail situation. If the lighting's not good, you're probably not going to pull in a shop, right? Very simple, basic, fundamental. The environment that we create, if you want to use a park area or downtown area at night, you're probably not going to walk around if you don't feel comfortable there. So creating an environment that entices people to use those areas. Safety factors. So, really, the whole point of street lighting has nothing to do with cars. It's all about pedestrian foot traffic and we've gotten away from that. We don't think of it that way. And so, understanding those safety factors and why our lighting's there, the original intent for it. Another important thing that we focus on is how it can affect our emergency services, police, fire, EMS. So, if you're on the public safety side, you're trying to identify someone, if you've got horrible lighting, well, do they have blue pants on or black pants on? And how do I, you know, identify that suspect? If it's fire EMS, I'm looking for markings on the street or if I'm just trying to park and I can't tell if this is a yellow line or a white line. Very simple things like that are affected by quality lighting or lack thereof. The next important thing, energy savings, is why we're talking about it at all, because with the projects that we do, the savings that are harnessed allow us to pay for that project and then take advantage of all the secondary tertiary benefits that come along with that. So, one of the things that we're really intent on doing is, I work with a lot of school districts, hospitals, and we're working with them and suggesting that they should buy millions or thousands of dollars of equipment. And so I'm a big believer of, we want to live with that equipment first in our facility to make sure we're comfortable with it, we spent our dollars on it and we've put it through the rigors and tested it. So I'm going to show you a video in just a second of our parking lot where we did just that. We went from a metal A light system, which is what you see basically everywhere today, and it's antiquated technology, to LED. And so, we didn't change any locations of pole placement. All we did was redesign the new fixtures to fit the space. So the video does a really good job of explaining why that's important and why it's important for you guys to consider some of these upgrades. And so this is a parking lot, this isn't street lighting, but we'll make a jump to a street lighting video in just a second.
In Louisville, Kentucky, the Harshaw Train Company recently completed an innovative lighting and controls retrofit of its existing eight-acre LEED silver canvas. The main areas of concern included a reduction in the overall energy consumption, improving light levels for underlit and unsafe areas, and challenging the operating times of luminaires when the site is unoccupied. By utilizing a specific combination of these LED lumen packages and optical distributions, the designers were able to achieve the ideal site lighting solution while reducing the number of site luminaires from 21 metal A light fixtures to 11 LED fixtures and improve their parking lot max-to-man uniformity by over 81%. Luminaires can now be individually scheduled to turn off during non-work hours and quickly illuminate with the use of the onboard occupancy sensor. Additionally, light levels for luminaires that are dimmed can be raised to accommodate site occupants once they have entered the site. With the added ability to monitor daylight or lack thereof, luminaires can automatically adjust themselves to maintain a balance of artificial and natural light and provide the proper light levels throughout the entire site. In the months following the installation, Harshaw Train has witnessed an impressive return, including a 68% reduction in energy costs.
Wow.
Drastically improved uniformity and safety across the entire site, and a significant reduction in wasteful after-hour operating times.
So that 68% actually is low, as we kept tweaking on the system. We're in the low 80s now. And so, a couple of different ways we do that is, if you thought, we do some daylight harvesting. So, the sun rises on the east side of our building and what happens is each fixture is looking for light level that we have set through the programming. And so what you'll find is in the morning, the fixtures on the east side of the building will shut off before the ones on the west side, as the sun comes up over the building in the west side. Vice versa in the afternoon when the sun's setting. So we're only using the light when we need it. Another thing that we've done is after 10 o'clock, we run, you know, typical business hours, so after 10 o'clock, we don't have a lot of traffic. So we drop our entire parking lot down to 20% output. And so what happens is if the occupancy sensor on one of the fixtures detects motion, it's going to ramp back up to 100% instantly. Now, it's not going to discern from you or me, a plastic bag or a turkey, but it's looking for that activity. And so, we're only using light at that portion of the night when we need it. So, we didn't want to go dark for security reasons, we're in a new development, but we didn't want to be at 100% output of light and that wouldn't be as efficient as possible. So, there's definitely all kinds of different recipes depending on the site that you're in and the application. So the next video, this is a little bit more conducive to you guys. This is a city project and it's actually drone video, side-by-side before and after. So, when we go into a lot of these projects, if we were trying to remove the pole placement to make it optimal, it would become cost-effective. So what my challenge is, and with the software that we have in-house and auditing, is to use the right fixture on the right pole placement to bridge that gap or to do the best we can to bridge that gap where we may have a dark spot. And then also taking consideration, citizen comfort, right? We don't want to be sending light into a bed, you know, keeping people up. All those things, all those factors. And on top of that, considering what DOT says, you know, it's a primary, secondary, tertiary, what's the pedestrian traffic. So all those come into play when we go in to do a design. So this video is pretty telling on the improvement opportunity that's out there. There's not any narrative, this one's just elevator music, but on the right, you know, is the LED solution on the left is existing, which was high-pressure sodium yellow, kind of dingy lights. You'll notice the difference in color of the yellow lines, much easier to see than green grass. So your color rendering is much higher, you can pick out certain colors easier. You can see we're doing a lot better job of bridging the gaps in between each pole and it's a lot better job of illuminating that space. So, as you're using this area, it's much more conducive to everything's going to happen in that space because you have a lot better idea of what's going to flow. And then the left side is so dark in some places, you can't even, it's, we do our best to try to lighten it up to help it out as much, but it's just, it's just plain dark.
Yeah, that's a huge difference.
It's remarkable.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
How does the savings relate to the streetlights that Kentucky Utility provides? I mean...
Yeah, great, great question. So, there is, and Anthony alluded to this, and I think Mary did a little bit, so in these particular instances, the cities were in a little different relation. They weren't KU customers, they were KDA customers and there was some different ways that the money flowed through. But what happens is, and what we see happening in the country is, there's, there is legislation in some places that goes through that allows cities to work and potentially buy back their fixtures and put in new technology. Because what happens today with the utility unfortunately is if you want this technology... And they go to market a lot different way than we do as far as design. It'll actually cost you more than the old technology you had in place. So, there is some partnership and teaming that has to happen with the utility to allow for this to take place. But in the cities that we've done so far, we're averaging around 62 to 65% reduction in energy costs. But then you have also your investment charge of your maintenance fees. You know, you're moving to a product with a 10-year lifespan, or actually 10-year warranty, 100,000-hour lifespan. Usually, if you're running lights dusted on, it's only 4,000 hours a year. So there's a huge reduction in maintenance. And so that's, that's where the savings comes in, but there's work that has to be done on the front end to allow those to flow through.
I guess, how does that cooperation take place? How do we benefit? I mean, I know it can save Kentucky Utilities, but how does that...
No, that, it saves you on your bill directly.
Yes.
That's where, that's where it vets out. That savings that I just talked about, that's off your bill that you get from them on a monthly basis for the system that you're powering today.
So how does that work exactly then? Is it not a straight fee?
Right now, we pay for all the streetlights in our city, except for the one, the decorative ones downtown. We, we're not just paying for the electricity, we pay for the pole and the light and we rent it. We rent it forever in perpetuity.
So, part of the, part of the savings is when you buy your own fixture, you eventually pay that fixture off and all you're paying is the, you always pay the electricity cost, always. But obviously, if you're using less electricity, you're paying KU a lot less.
How much are we, I thought it was like a fixed fee, like, kind of like the garbage. Maybe it's $8 per month?
Depends on the light.
Okay.
So the electrical cost is a fixed fee. It's just whatever rate. But, say, a Cobra Head fixture that's 15 feet tall might be $20 a month. Or, a decorative fixture with a lantern might be $30 a month. And it all depends, and then the ones that are just a simple arm attached to a telephone pole might be $10 a month. So it all just depends on where it is, what kind of light it is, but it's a set tariff. It's a rate structure that the Public Service Commission approves them to charge us for each individual light. And it all adds up, however many lights there are, you know, there's, you can take all the rates and all the hours and add it all up and that's our bill.
So what would you suggest for a city like Georgetown? I mean, where do you even start?
Well, right now, we, we know that you have a certain number of light fixtures that you want to get installed, right? And so, that involves getting electricity to those lights and poles going up, you know, KU could very well still play that role or we could propose it. You have a number of fixtures that our city owns that need to be upgraded, need to be installed and improved. We could do those for you all, right? And then, as you go forward, talking about those that KU owns, that's where the conversation has to come, where the city has to say, "We really want to pursue this and let's sit down at the table and really talk about it." The power's still going to be provided by them, right? That's still going to take place. But as Slater said, there is an opportunity, once you start talking about investment charges and you start talking about maintenance fees, those numbers could be renegotiated, they could be changed, okay?
Slater, LED lighting is brighter and we've seen examples in your office and on video.
Yes.
Some LED lighting, I've read about cities who have gone to all LED lighting and citizens complained because the blue tint to the light made it feel like an industrial setting and it wasn't as cozy and it didn't have the human warmth. Do you face that? Did you face it in Fulton and these other cities? What, what, what's the answer to that?
Sure. Great question. That's something that's out in the market right now. I'm sure if anybody's watched TV in the past six months, I saw a report from American Medical Association about LED lighting and blue color temps. To answer your first part of the question, we actually, with Fulton and Hickman, it was a resounding success. We actually had citizens that would come in and thank some of our crews when they were eating lunch in town. So, it was a great response. But I'll tell you that one of the, it's kind of a joke, a running joke. What's the best thing, what, what does a good lighting project and a bad lighting project have in common? They both get complaints and they both get compliments. So, good communication is important to the citizens, which we had a little bit of a rollout plan, letting them know what was happening, where we'd be working. And so that helps to let them know what to expect. But as far as the color temperature goes, we actually run two color temperatures, one a little bit warmer for residential areas and one a little bit cooler for more industrial or commercialized areas. But I'll tell you, the things that people are concerned about with color temperatures is, is kind of interesting because when you sit on your cell phone or watch your TV right before you go to bed at night, you're getting more of the color spectrum that people say is bad than you do from anything that's going to come from a light fixture outside your house. So there's, so there's a lot of educational stuff that, that needs to be communicated in that. But we do go with a warmer color temp in residential areas to help appease those, those concerns. But in all reality, the science says is there's nothing detrimental to anything in that color temperature range that we go in the residential area, any worse than what you do looking at your laptop or your TV or cell phone right before you go to bed. You know, that's going to keep you up all night. So, great question. So on that, we talked about some additional benefits with, with lighting. So, what's happening in the industry is that the light fixture is no longer just a light fixture. It's a point of data collection. It can be a communication point. We've seen cities that actually, when they go in and do a lighting retrofit, they'll put some communication technology on the fixtures that will create a mesh network. So now, downtown has Wi-Fi. That's a secondary benefit of going to new fixtures because now we've got a PowerPoint that we can create this network. We can collect data, we can listen for gunshots, we can take, we can take samples of air. If you've got an air quality issue in a certain area, you want to know what's going on in a certain area. We can set alerts, we can use it as part of an emergency broadcast system if we have a severe thunderstorm or tornado warning. There's even cities, Knoxville is testing this out, where they're working closely with EMS, fire, police to help direct them to where they're going. So, if they get a call from something in a 1300 block, they'll actually flash, blink that light in a 1300 block to help direct emergency services to get there. So, there's, you take it from a static fixture that just does one thing to enable yourself to create a network, to capture data, to transmit data, to have more of a living, breathing item in the city. And so, yeah, the other thing is, is metering. So, you can move away from just a simple pen and paper type, like you've got this many fixtures at this rate. We can now, let's say we were, we were doing something similar in your city for certain areas where we're dimming or harvesting daylight, we can get meter grade data back from these fixtures that can kick it into a system and you'll get billed exactly on what you use rather than just a simple pen and paper multiplication.
Will it also tell you when that, figure when that light is out?
Yeah, so it'll monitor voltage and so it would send an alert to say, "Hey, now, we won't know why it's out, whether it got knocked down, struck by lightning, or there's a failure on the fixture, but it'll say, "Hey, our voltage is off. This is a, this is a important, you know, you need to go check it out." The other nice thing is, from the process that we go through, for the cities that use GIS to map everything... The other nice thing is, from the process that we go through, for the cities that use GIS to map everything, is this kicks out an inventory at the end of the day, that each fixture, serial number, model number, drops in a GIS with a GPS location. And now you have an inventory that you can, um, watch, that's tangible, that you can now fall back on during the warranty period so that you're not spending money because you just don't have sight of what you had or what you didn't have, and what the warranty period was. And, um, so all the great things that come with GIS, making notes, doing different things, that all folds into there, so.
Uh, how much are those type fixtures?
Depends. So, I have a great answer for you, 'cause it, uh, we may use eight different, um, lumen packages and five different distribution patterns within your city to address all the different spacing, the primary tertiary roads. It, 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 there's so many variables, so.
Ballpark?
Uh, but what I can tell you is, it's a, it's a great investment that does pay for itself.
Boy, that heads straight around it.
Well, it, it's real simple to just try to throw a number out there, but as Slater said, that wouldn't be accurate. We, we're engineers, and we wanna make sure we design first, because you just give a number, you get fixed on a number, and everybody begins to think that's the number. Well, you haven't gone through design yet.
Yeah. Got the cart before the horse.
Yeah, something that, that Slater and Anthony and their colleagues helped me understand and love all that. Up until this point, we, I noticed the title, we, we've had the Internet of People, and we're, we're changing to an Internet of Things.
True.
And devices are all live, and they're data points, and they're hooked to the Internet. And, uh, the management ability, the data gathering availability that that gives us. Uh, for some of the communities where they're maintaining structures, we walked into their control room, and they can pop up the building and see how many condensers on the air conditioning unit are running at that particular time. Uh, they, they frequently get messages and fix issues before they happen in the building. Or they send a serviceman to your building and say, "Your air conditioner's getting ready to break." Uh, and so much of it is managed remotely. Uh, but this Internet of Things was a new concept to me.
Mary, this is fascinating.
Yeah, it is.
And, and I, I mean, from my perspective, I'd like to see us kinda pursue the next step and trying to learn more about it, seeing where we might be able to apply it, maybe in, um, put it in some of the new fixtures that we've talked about, and maybe even, you know, upgrading some neighborhoods that, that need that. And I know some due diligence is gonna have to go into this. And looking at some other communities that have, have done what you've just described as well, I mean, I like to go there at night and see how they look.
Well, I, I'll tell you, one of the things that Tom is speaking from, from personal experience, is a visit to our office in Louisville. Um, we, we love to do, we love to host, uh, people to come in and learn more about what we do. Come to our office, come to Fort Knox, where you can see a lot of the work that we've done in place and in action. And it gives everyone a far greater perspective, uh, of what is capable, and then how it can apply to you.
When you say Fort Knox, you talking about like a neighborhood in Fort Knox, or?
Base, base, military base.
Yeah.
You might not want to go there.
Well, no, that'd be good too, but a ne-, a neighborhood would be something that we're gonna be dealing with.
Yeah.
And, uh, from my perspective, I'd like to see a neighborhood. But anyway, this is exciting. I know we can't answer everything tonight, but...
And it may be, uh, if, depending on how many are interested, uh, a, a day trip. Uh, the nice thing about Harshaw Train's office is it's on Blenkenbaker Road.
Oh, I know where that is.
So it's on our side.
Know where that is.
It's a doable trip.
Right.
Pretty easy doable trip. And, and I found, oh, see, I was in your office, it was maybe two and a half hours, and saw enough to have my eyes opened. If, if there, if there's a field trip opportunity, I'd be glad to talk with you all about a arrangement.
Certainly like to go.
I have a question. If, I keep thinking about West Main Street.
Thank you.
Is that something that could, I mean, LED lighting could make a huge difference.
It's really dark up there.
Do we, would we have the opportunity to do that with it being a state highway?
Several questions.
Okay.
That, that I think we need to be, if, I think it's about building a relationship and picking partners. Um, but then we know there's gonna be some, some electrical engineering for those areas on the state highway that have not been, uh, engineered yet.
Yeah.
And the state has signed off on those. The other big variable that, that we have to work through is our relationship with Kentucky Utilities.
Yes.
Because frankly, if Kentucky Utilities is not a willing partner in this, they can just make our lives miserable for a long time. They can just kinda hold us off and hold us off and hold us off. But, but I think more and more cities are, are, uh, looking for smarter ways to do this stuff. And they're looking for partners that can help us deal with the utilities more effectively. So we don't have a very big bag of tricks when we're working with a, a utility. Some expertise helps in that regard. So, due diligence, uh, working with KU, uh, working with, uh, either, you know, we've authorized Kyle to, to do an RFQ for an electrical engineer to help us with the design work or the state highway lights we'd like to put in. That may be something we can talk with you all about, even responding to that RFQ.
Okay.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And, 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 and then float some dates with Anthony and you all about if you'd like to take a trip to Louisville. And I do think, David, eventually, I'd like to find someplace closer in Fulton if I can.
Yeah.
'Cause it's a long haul down to Fulton.
Four hours. Wow.
Y'all probably have a corporate plane. Well, we got a really nice airport.
You got an airport, just bring us on over.
We don't sound too spoiled.
You know, we could let them put a couple lights out and fixtures out there in the parking lot, and see what it looks like. There you go.
Our brand new parking.
We could do that. And, and we're looking at, uh, you know, we, we've got some really special areas of town that we're trying to nurture along. Our West Main Street and Water Street areas, uh, are growing. We have to solve parking problems, and we have to solve lighting problems if we're gonna make it really a pedestrian-friendly place and a place where people wanna come to. Uh, we've got some real needs for this. Uh, we, we talked about this building and other buildings that the city owns for energy efficiency.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we've looked at the buildings too. We, we'll be back to you with more information.
Now, this, this light over here's been flickering the whole time. We've had the meeting tonight.
It's been flashing, you say, "Change me, change me."
Tonight, I wanted to introduce, uh, these gentlemen and this company to the council and gauge the interest for continuing conversations.
I'm interested.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
While, while you're here, Mary, real quick question. If, 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 uh, if a development was taken off right now, would they be able to implement, here in Scott County, would they be able to implement your services, or would you still have to have Kentucky Utilities cooperation if it was done on the front end?
You, you could do whatever you want on the front end. A lot of, a lot of developers or developments typically go the utility route because it gets them out of the upfront cost.
That's exactly right.
And so, if, if you run, and, so this is from a property management day, so we used to work with a lot of shopping centers, and they would go that route because they develop it, within five years, they sell it. So they would get as much cost off their pay as, as possible upfront. But if you've got a long-term ownership deal, as, um, Andrew alluded to, the agreement with the utility is in perpetuity, no matter how many times over you pay for that original install. And so, if you were to do something on the front end in a development, all you would do is, just like if you needed new power anywhere else, you have them set a meter, and you run your power out to your poles and your fixtures, and, you know. So there's a lot of different ways to do, you know, work within that.
Okay.
Okay. Anthony, anything else we need to do tonight, or have we accomplished what you and Slater wanted to do tonight?
I, I thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight. And, um, I look forward to further conversation with you about maybe doing a field trip and seeing how we can do some more work together. But I think this is perfect for me tonight. Does it meet your, your needs?
Yes, sir. Any other questions from the council?
Yes. Yeah, we, we did show the last slide that had our contact information.
We started with the questions too quickly.
Anybody else?
I'll, I'll get, I'll get them all, all the right information.
Thank you.
Slater, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
They shed the light on the problem.
That's right. He sold the light, he brought him to us.
Good job.
That'll be a headline.
Uh, we, we've got a lot of, uh, line items left on the agenda, but I think they go quickly.
Okay. Goodbye, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Ann. Uh, everybody can, uh, uh, under item ten, under the engineer, and I did not ask Kyle to be present tonight. I just, these are pretty routine matters. Uh, we have a municipal order approving, uh, asphalt and stone materials, and a municipal order approving asphalt construction, and a municipal order approving, uh, pavement markings.
Would you like that all at one time?
Yeah, should we read them? Don't think we have to.
I'll make a motion for all three of them.
All three, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, motion's been made and seconded. These are our unit prices that we will, uh, for the rest of this fiscal year, we won't have to bid materials. Uh, and, and in fact, uh, the asphalt construction is also bid on a unit basis. So it gives us a lot of flexibility moving forward. Uh, if we take all those three together, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Stacy?
My own.
Hello, Stacy.
Oh, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Oh. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, good evening, um, here for your June thirty quarter, uh, financial update. I believe we've already passed out or laid at your place the expense report, so you can look over that at your leisure. And, uh, just a reminder, as always, both for the expense report and the revenue report that I'm highlighting tonight, these numbers, even though they're June thirty numbers, aren't final until they're audited. There will be some end-of-year entries and adjustments and things done in preparation for the audit, so just keep that in mind. Um, first, we'll talk about our payroll taxes. And just a quick look, you can see that for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, we have collected eleven point two million dollars. Uh, we budgeted nine point eight million, so we did exceed that. Um, there probably will be a little bit additional that comes in at the end of July that will be credited back to this fiscal year. And, uh, just as a reminder, um, fiscal year eighteen, the one we're in right now, we budgeted eleven million. So since this is the end of the year, I kinda wanted you to see how we ended this year compared to how we planned, uh, for that, for the, this year that we're in right now. And as always, you can see, uh, the incentive payments there at the bottom for our incentive plan. Um, there were a couple of months where we didn't have that money withheld because fiscal year for the incentive program is different from our fiscal year, and they hit the two point five million cap.
Yeah, that year begins April one.
So we saved, on our budget, we saved about a hundred thirty-six thousand, because we planned on two point five million reduction, and it was only two million three sixty-three. So that's payroll taxes. For net profits, this one is always difficult, but you can see, uh, through June thirtieth, we collected four million five hundred sixty-five thousand, a hundred forty-eight dollars on a two point eight million dollar budget. Um, just to, uh, as a reminder, this current fiscal year, we budgeted three point five million. And one of the, um, we had a large lump sum payment, uh, last year. So if you take that out of the equation and compare last year to this year, moving that big one-time back payment, there's only about a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollar difference between fiscal year sixteen and seventeen, removing that large one-time. Uh, I will always caution to remember, you will see, if you look at June, the month of June since two thousand fourteen, the month of June is almost always a negative number. The reason behind that is, when the Revenue Commission completes their audit, there's a page in their audit that says, "Here is how much we owe taxpayers on their net profit returns in credits or refunds." So what this means, someone filed a ta-, a tax return, they actually were owed money, but they have either not requested the refund, or they're roll, rolling the credit over to their next tax return. So what happens is, when that audit comes out, as I mentioned, that's one of my audit adjustments I make, I will reduce this year's revenue by the amount that we owe to those companies or that have a credit balance. And it has been anywhere from five hundred to nine hundred thousand since I've been here. So I would say, at a minimum, you could expect this year's revenue to decrease by probably five hundred thousand.
This is one of the most difficult things that Stacy and the administration has to deal with. Is we, we budget carefully and we budget conservatively, but these refunds, uh, that we don't always know the total of, always impact us at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So we respond to that by trying to, uh, think through the process pretty carefully and be conservative with it. But this is a difficulty that most communities don't have to deal with.
I know, right?
Yeah.
We, we've got a great problem to deal with, but, but it's unusual.
And always as a reminder too, that depending on when any entity's tax year might end, um, even if their tax return may have already been due in April or July, they often extend those by six months. So sometimes, even if entities have paid estimated payments, we may not know until halfway through this fiscal year what their tax due ended up being. So these numbers sometimes include estimated payments from taxpayers that we don't know the final tax number on until later, because of when their tax returns due. So unfortunately, again, that causes a little bit of the trouble with estimating, because most taxpayers pay estimated taxes, and then it depends on when their return comes, whether we know they overpaid or underpaid. For insurance premium tax collections, um, just as a reminder, uh, their final return for June thirty is not due until July thirty-first. So they have another week to get those in, so that's why June is only twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, we should expect to see anywhere from another five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars come in July thirty-first, uh, after they postmark their returns. So we should probably end the fiscal year between two point four and two point five million. For fiscal year eighteen that we're currently in, we budgeted two million four hundred fifty thousand. So we did increase that budget by a hundred fifty thousand over what we did this year. So trying to, as, as the mayor has always said, we want to be conservative with revenues, but we don't want to under-budget either. So we try to just watch our history and how things perform, and then increase those as we can. Property tax collections obviously should be pretty much complete. Um, we're a couple hundred dollars over budget. That's, we did adjust this account in mid-year. We weren't that close on the budget. Um, during our mid-year amendment, we increased it to what actual collections were. Um, but you can see over, since two thousand fifteen, the last couple of years, our property tax collection has grown by fifty thousand each year due to new property, um, you know, in, in assessments. So for fiscal year eighteen that we're in right now, we budgeted one million six hundred ninety thousand, assuming that trend continues with additional new property. Finally, uh, alcoholic beverage regulatory fees. Again, these are one of the quarterly returns. They're not due till July thirty-first. So I've shown what's been collected so far. Uh, we should probably end the year between nine hundred fifteen, nine hundred twenty-five thousand, uh, depending on how this last quarter shakes out. Uh, we budgeted the same for fiscal year eighteen, because it's sometimes hard to tell. As you can tell, fiscal year sixteen was a down year compared to fifteen. So we budgeted right at nine hundred thousand again. So if it outperforms, then we, we review our allocation and, and charge additional. That's it.
And if, as those, as we get into the, this current budget year, if we outperform these revenue numbers, then that's when we sit down with department heads and see if we can amend their budgets and help them fund things.
It looks like you did a pretty good job hitting last year's budget plus, so pray we do this year.
And you'll see, if you look at that report that I handed out, that
Yep.
I believe, I didn't write it down, but I believe it was around two million or so, that revenues exceeded expenses. But if you look at Department ten, six, ten, you'll see there's a lot of transfers made between funds. And I usually wait a little bit to let all of the expense invoices come in, to make sure I know exactly what we've spent through June thirtieth. Uh, so there are transfers still to be made to other funds. So right now, we may show two point two million apart, but it, it could end up around that, or it could be a little different. Again, adjustments will be made during the audit, so. Again, adjustments will be made during the audit, so.
Sounds good. Any questions for Stacy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Let's see, item 12 on your agenda is a municipal order approving us to surplus extra lockers at the fire station, chief. Have you replaced these, is that right?
Actually, these lockers were built one, by one of our guys like many years ago. City bought the material and they built them, but they're, they're kind of in bad shape, falling apart, so we didn't want to surplus them. Plus, Stamy Ground Fire Department has requested a few of them.
Good.
So, we probably, because some of them fall apart, they had to take pieces off one and put on another to make a good set, and then the rest, we'd probably just take to the recycling center or something.
Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions for chief, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, T. Ford.
Thank you.
All right. Item 13, now, gosh, Chief Ford, you had one item, and I see police has got four items. So, next meeting, you'll need to step it up a little bit.
Before we have him hold this down, son.
One of the two.
Can he do ours?
Yes, one of the two. The first item, a municipal order declaring surplus items. We have a list of that, Robert?
I do know, I think it's in there.
They're right.
It's in the pack.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Chief, the next one is a municipal order approving the purchase of eight Harris mobile radios. I assume we are updoing eight new cruisers?
That is correct.
Would be the purpose of this?
I make a motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item C is a municipal order approving the purchase of four 2017 Ford police cruisers. As I understand it, chief, the state bid price for the Chargers is currently expired. Is that right?
That is correct. They are in the process of working through those bids. We hope to have those next 30 days-ish, give or take 30 days.
Okay, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna beat Council member Leslie to the touch, but we always have an interest in Camrys, and we've talked about this. My understanding is, the department is planning on buying some Camrys in next year's budget for administrative vehicles?
That is correct. The Ford Explorers that we have are need, reaching the end of their life, so it'll be time to replace those, and the ones that we're replacing are administrative cars. Chief Bosses has well over 100,000 miles on it, mine's getting up there. Captain's mind, there's just getting close to 100,000, so we would replace those and use those Camrys for administrative cars.
So, we can get you all in Camrys soon. That'd be good. We'll back up with Fords, a couple Chargers.
Diversity there.
Okay, there is a municipal order approving the purchase of four police cruisers at the state bid price.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made and seconded. Thank you. There are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then finally, a municipal order approving the purchase for, of the upbid for the cars that we're buying.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, T.
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like tonight?
Well, you missed that opportunity.
Then we're left with council comments, and just something that's occurred to me, and I've thought about it at different times, and these random thoughts pop into my head, just something I wanted to ask the clerk about doing in the future. When we have a roll call vote, we always start with the letterhead and go down. And having served as a council member before, I think it's real nice that we alternate going forwards and backwards.
So, I don't have to really shake it up in the middle, I just gotta go from front to back.
The first person shouldn't have to vote.
Alphabetically.
Whoever first on the agenda. Chuck doesn't have to vote first every time.
Sometimes that works in your benefit, though.
Certainly. But I think out of fairness, we should, we should run it one way, and then the next time, run it the other way.
I'm with me.
And then, everybody gets a shot, and it's just a.
So, like the pledge.
Like the pledge.
We've done it that way.
Yeah.
You know.
We have.
So, we'll, we'll start with that, and just not leave the same people having to do that every time.
Well, your last name starts with a T.
Well, I was just looking to see, it's Marvin and you, the amazing.
S's.
So, the oldest to the youngest, is that what you're saying?
Oh, I'm not gonna touch that one.
No, we missed the oldest.
I'm the oldest.
Youngest.
So, for council comments, we'll start with Ms. Convent.
Thank you. All I'm gonna say today is, thank you for going to Louisville, thank you for talking to them. I think that's gonna work out really well. I appreciate that very much, because lighting and pedestrian safety's big on my list, and you're marching forward. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the field trip.
All right.
It was interesting, I enjoyed it.
There's a storm drain over on, right by Northside Christian Church I mentioned here a while back. I got weed-eated every week. I mean, it's plump full, it's plump full.
It's, it's all filled up with grass.
Soon as you turn right, right there, it's on your left, right there by the church. Going up, what is that, Jefferson?
Jefferson.
Right turn on the left-hand side, going up Jefferson.
Okay.
I mean, it's, there's no storm sewer there, it's just.
There's no place for that water to go.
No, but I can weed-eat grass in it, though. It's unbelievable how grass will grow in that moist.
Trees.
Tall grass.
That's right.
Nothing here but good presentation, Mayor. Good job.
Mayor?
I don't know, all the neighborhoods are contacting me all of a sudden, so I've got another one, which actually, you addressed part of it, the O'Mill parking situation.
Yes, ma'am.
You took care of a couple of things, but there's still parking on the sidewalk. So, actually, I drove over there to see what the problem was. They do have a problem as to why they're parking there.
Is it a physical problem that we can help with?
Uh, maybe. There's no parking on both sides of the street, and so, they have no place to park, except up on there. And when I drove through there, there was like five houses that they're parking on that grass section in between the street and the sidewalk. That's where they're parking. So, they can't do that, and then they're parking in the yard, and we have an ordinance against them parking in the yard, too. So, but they don't have a place to park. So, the traffic committee maybe needs to, to look at that and see why it has no parking on both sides of the street, and, and what can be done.
I got a text from Buddy also.
O'Mill Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's, that's, there's sign, I went down there, and then I saw the signs were over here, and I thought, oh, well, that's why they're parking there. Then when I came back, the signs were on that side of the street, too, and I thought, well.
There's no parking on either side, right?
We don't allow, we don't allow it anywhere.
Yeah.
Can you work with the traffic committee to, to, to evaluate that situation?
O'Mill, uh-huh. So, the gentleman that sent me the, the texts about that over there, and then I got a couple texts from a couple of other neighbors, and they were talking about that the neighborhood, they feel like the neighborhood is kind of going down, and that was their big issue, too, was that. And then they said there's goposts that are hanging up over in the road, and we have an ordinance against that as well, but that was one of the things. And then, another neighbor in that subdivision contacted about, and we've talked about this briefly in here, the cars that are parked out on, were Canes, between Canes and the fire department, the car lots parking out on the right-of-way. Well, before Canes was there, I don't think there's a big problem with people, but now there's traffic going back and forth, and they're actually out parking on, on the right-of-way, so.
The car lots, cars for sale.
The cars for sale.
Are blocking the.
Yeah, they're, they're sitting here, yeah, they're sitting here actually on the right, under those trees that we talked about, and.
Take a look, because that might be a private road. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, if the right-of-way belongs by the state, then.
That is a state right there from, from, from the, next to rolled over, that's state property right there.
So, I don't know, but anyway, I told them I would bring it to the attention, and so, but seriously, the one where they're parking on their sidewalks, I can understand why they're parking on sidewalks, but that's not a good thing, they're not supposed to be doing that, so.
See what you get them a better.
Right.
Okay, thank you.[1767.12]